Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Craven County Board of Commissioners' regular session for May 21st is now in session. Put your phones on silent ring. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Certainly.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Liner?
Here.
Commissioner McKay?
Here.
Commissioner Sampson?
Here.
Commissioner Tyson?
Here.
Chairman Mark?
Here.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
Here.
Do we stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father God, Lord, we thank you for this day of life in which you have given to us, Lord, and for the blessings that you continue to pour upon us, Lord. Father, I give you thanks this morning that we have the opportunity to gather in this assembly, Father, free Americans, Lord, with the right to make decisions, Lord, that will be for the benefit of those in which we serve. I thank you, Father, for the opportunity to serve and for my fellow commissioners. And, Lord, I ask that this day that, Lord, you give us wisdom, give us guidance and knowledge that we make decisions that would be honoring to you and for the benefit of those in which we represent. Father, we give you thanks and praise for all these things. We ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
First on the agenda is to approve the agenda. I would like to make a motion to postpone, actually, I just would like to postpone the item number three, request for food line in regards to earlier Sunday alcohol sales. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I was hoping that we might be able to move for a public hearing on that item. Would you be willing to allow for a postpone and provide for a public hearing?
I'm glad you said that. I forgot to ask for a public hearing.
Thank you.
That was the whole purpose of it. Thank you. The motion then would be for a public hearing postponed and a public hearing. All those in favor, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Date would be the next.
You've got to have the date.
Date would be the next?
June 1st.
Fourth.
Fourth, June the 4th.
Yep.
Okay, so it's June 4th.
Evening of June the 4th.
So the motion then is to postpone for a public hearing for the evening on June the 4th. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Nays, the ayes have it. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda, which consists of tax releases and refunds.
Motion to adopt.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Certainly. Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I don't mean to be a stickler here, but I know that we approved an amendment to the agenda for today, but did we approve the agenda today?
I think that was all part of it, wasn't it?
It can be if that's what you want it to be.
Yeah, I think that's what I said originally.
The agenda along with the motion to remove.
Very good.
Okay, next is the Craven Aging Planning Board.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Should I have your package? The budget recommendations? Looks like so. On April 19th, the Craven Aging Planning Board Budget Committee met. The budget committee consisted of Lydia Brown, member at large, who chaired the committee, Thomas Smith from the Health Department, Carolyn Bland, member at large, and Joy Hudson, who's chosen from North Carolina Works as an alternate in case one of those individuals could not attend yet. The county this year received for the future year coming up, July 1st, received a reduction of $10,257. But overall, the nine-county region received an overall reduction of $72,130. So what you have before you is the recommendations that were presented by the Budget Committee at the May 2nd Craven Aging Planning Board. It was presented and voted by the full board. So you have before you what each agency was allocated for the Budget Committee and what the board voted. Also, in the second page of the attack sheet, you'll have the 708-731, which is the county form that goes to the county office. It has the breakdown of the block grant per agency and also the required local match, which is 10 percent. And the Aging Board is also requesting that the county commissioners please to meet that 10 percent match for the block grant funding for all agencies.
Okay. So move. Second?
Second discussion.
Yes, sir. If I may. Ms. Newkirk?
Yeah.
Mary Ann, to be commended on the budget. This was a hard, hard budget. You've heard me speak up here a number of times over the years. This reduction equates to about $65,000 for this county in the last four years of loss through AAA and the feds or what's coming down, which means that they've continued to provide at the level that we've been going through with not much loss. We're at a point now that we're starting to affect people, programs, that's got to be taken a look at. I would like to make a proposal to this board that this, the federal government has increased the AAA budget this year for the first time in four years. But we do not know what that amount is going to be until October or November as far as it goes to this county. I would like to make a motion to this board that this board provide the $10,257 that they're short to meet the needs of what they met last year with the understanding and an agreement between this board and the Aging Board that if the funding comes in for this amount or more, that they pay this board back that amount minus the 10 percent match, which is required by us if we approve. This will keep them whole and able to provide the same service that we provided last year, that give them a chance, depending on where it's going and looking like, to start looking at people and programs. But at the same time, Mr. Chairman, I would ask you to appoint a board or a committee to look at the Craven Aging Planning Board budget as a whole to determine where we can move this. And I say this, and it's nothing derogatory against this board, but we need to look at how we're spending our money and in what areas. I think we need to look at this and we need to discuss this as a whole for everyone. It's come down to the time now we can no longer start taking cuts across the board on every agency and every program because the small ones are the ones that's getting hurt. And we need to take a look and discuss that and go over that. So my motion is for this board to approve $10,257 plus the match to that amount with the understanding to pay back to $10,257 once it's received from the feds for the community block grant.
I was talking to motion.
Okay. If motion is second? Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
I think it was already a motion on the floor, Mr. Chairman, wasn't there? Yeah, there was already a motion on the floor before you made your motion.
There was a motion on the floor, but not, there was a motion on the floor to pass their budget. So we need, I'm amending that budget.
So we can still have a discussion?
Yes, sir. We need a second on motion to amend the amendment and if they don't.
Just had to say.
I was seconding. Mr. Chairman, if I can, good morning.
Good morning.
Can you walk us through the pre-cuts that you have outlined in the budget?
The budget will start with, if you're looking at the recommendations, this is the page we're looking at. This is what the Budget Committee recommended. They went program by program because they did in the past, history has been, it's been an equal percentage across the board. But what the Budget Committee did this time, and they are highly to be commended because they worked very, very hard on this budget, so they took it program by program. And each program had a representative in attendance to answer questions that any of the Budget Committee had to ask. And you'll see that in the column where it says 17, 18, current allocation, that is what each agency is currently receiving through June 30th, 30th, 30th this year. In the column where you see the 18, 19, ACCBG recommendations, that was what each agency, well, I'm, wait a minute, yeah, what each agency will be receiving. There is a reduction amount because each program, when they presented their budgets to the lead agency, there were some that were over. For example, CARTS, they requested, I don't think, Mary Ann, do you have the sheet or had the request on it? I don't have that with me. Your original request from each agency. CARTS had originally requested $52,417, which was over the 17, 18 allocation of $47,175. So the board looked or the committee looked and the CARTS provides the transportation for those adults 60 and older to go to the Congregate Center for their meals. They do have additional funds that they can tap into toward the end of the fiscal year that can assist. And then again, we are hoping that we will receive additional funding in October.
So if I can then, so with respect to CARTS, while we are seeing a decrease here of $3,300, roughly.
Right.
There is an expectation that money will be coming in and you'll be able to make that line item whole.
Correct. And that's where Commissioner Liner made his recommendation.
Only the whole as it pertains to last year's budget, not what they asked for.
Okay, so it brings them up to last year's budget?
Yes, it brings everybody up to last year's budget to operate at the same level that we operated last year.
And your belief is that that will come forward?
We, go ahead.
We're not sure. What we understand from the area agency on aging is that there will be additional monies coming to the region. We don't know how that will break out per county within that region, our region, but we're not sure. And we want that until October.
Each county is different. I did bring the figures for the region. For the nine-county region, every county took a cut except for Pamlico County, which received $2,238. The larger the county, the larger the loss. And if you'd like to pass this around, this is the region allocation of the upcoming this will be. And you can see the negative and the only positive is Pamlico County.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This will be the first time in five years that the federal government has increased the home community block grant funding. First time in five years. Like I said, we've taken somewhere between $65,000 and $80,000 hit over that five-year period from where we started out back in '14. Are we, like I've talked before, are we sure? We know we're going to get some money, we just don't know how much money we're going to get. But based on everything we're hearing, we feel comfortable.
Okay, so then the commensurate decrease was made in the in-home support and home-delivered meals programs? Is that what we're seeing here as well?
Home-delivered, yes, and in-home support. Mary Ann can elaborate more on the in-homes.
Again, it was the agent board's recommendation for that, wasn't it, what we as an agency, me representing DSS, requested, right? This reduction is going to result in one person losing their service for in-home services and for home-delivered nutrition, I believe that'll equal to be about one person who will lose their meals for the year based on that reduction.
And is it a specific person? I mean, do we now, it's that people come and go and?
Exactly.
And so rather than us being able to serve 75, we'll only be able to serve 75?
Right, due to attrition, we would then not fill that spot, so to speak.
So that person would have to provide for themselves?
Exactly. Or, again, what we see at Department of Social Services is we run into the adult protective services issues where if there are no informal supports for that person, then we, then as an agency and as a county, have to take on that responsibility with whatever means we have to.
Yeah, it was mentioned there that there would be money at the end of the year. Where would that money be coming from?
The budget that's here.
Yeah, you were mentioned that the.
It's up to each agency to project their numbers for that allocation to make sure that we can provide services through June 4th, as we have always done. At each meeting, we do receive a report from the lead agency that shows where everybody's spending is so to see who is overspend, who is underspend. If a program is significantly underspent, then the board has to look at that, the Aging Board, and say, you know, what's going on? Does that money need to be reallocated to one who's overspent? So that's something that we also look at in January, February, for anyone that is overspent versus anyone that's underspent. Primarily, each agency stays on target. The programs pretty much know their boundary when they receive the allocation and history shows that they manage the budget and they manage what they have as best as they can.
But as far as, if I may, Mr. Chairman, you're looking at year-end money. There will be no year-end money come June for this budget. As it stands at our last meeting, everybody was on track, minus probably less than 1 percent, and that would be looked at, but there would be no extra funding.
Okay, that's why I asked that question.
And that money doesn't carry over to the next program year.
Mr. Chairman, I guess if I could, the way that I'm looking at this then is that what we basically have here is a gap between July 1st, the beginning of our fiscal year, and September 30th, the end of the federal fiscal year. And there's an expectation that some funding may become available by virtue of the federal government's budget situation. And so they would then release those funds and make them available. So what we have here is basically the month of July, the month of August, the month of September that we would have to basically bridge this situation. And Commissioner Liner, while I'm sympathetic to the fact that this agency would be taking a $10,257 cut, and I thank you very much for your hard work in making certain that the budget pencils out, I also recognize that we live in a system where there are going to be lots of agencies that will be cut over a period of time. And if the county government puts itself in a position that says, okay, well, you know, we've now decided that we're going to make up for whatever loss of revenue we've got coming in from the state or from the federal government, each and every instance that occurs, we're going to spend this county into oblivion. My concern would be here is rather than us taking the $10,257 as you've so moved, is to perhaps take 3/12 of that. So $854.75 times 3 for those three months, make certain that that money is available so that we've got the period of time between now and the end of the federal fiscal year to make a determination as to whether or not funds will continue. That I would be willing to do. If at that point in time, at the end of September 30th, it's deemed that we have not received those federal monies, that then you guys would have to go back to this budget and implement the drawbacks that have been identified. So obviously, I'd be prepared to make that motion depending on whether or not Commissioner Liner's amendment is successful. If it's successful, then I'll obviously go away. If it's not successful, then I would move that we make those three months worth of funding available. And if at the end of the three months, it's so determined that the federal government isn't coming up with the money, then you guys would go ahead and implement those cuts just as we would have to deal with for any agency across the government.
Mr. Chairman? Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I realize what everyone is saying, but I've been in this fight for a long time trying to help these senior citizens. And I don't know anyone to think about senior citizens not having a meal or not having transportation because I get cars all the time and sometime I have to go do it myself because I don't want to see no one going lacking because of a few dollars. Now, personally, the federal government have promised so much and they have not delivered that I really don't trust them that well. And I don't want nobody's life beyond whole because of a few dollars that we refuse to give to those people who already paid their dues. And I don't want to put them on hold. And it really, really disturbs me when I see people who really can't help themselves and got to go and try to make ends meet or either maybe not even get a meal one day and depending on somebody else bringing it. I can't live with it myself. So I would not support no other motion but the first one that was made.
I think Commissioner Dacey's point is well-taken, though, that if we have further cuts, we can't keep on adding to those cuts with our own money because after a while, we'll run out of money.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, that's the reason why I ask that you form a committee, that we go through this and look at this and put the Aging Planning Board aware of how the funding is going to be split in the future. And that will be the money and the county is not the bank. But for us, from my perspective, this is my perspective, right now, we've got less than 35, 30, 40 days before we're going to start telling people that they're not going to get serviced. I understand Commissioner Dacey's completely, completely. I don't think we should be in it. Like I've told everybody on this board before, the federal government done away with this program, I'd support it completely. But they're not. My only issue with that, there's three of these programs I know has to have a contract in place in July to move forward, that they've got to have a contract to guarantee them going forward on that. That's my issue, is them not being able to get a contract. They don't get a contract, then three of these services are not going to be provided because they're just not going to, the cost is going to be too much for them to go through. I've never seen the federal government come out one July with their budget. It's always been extended either into the November, early December timeframe before the budget is actually pushed out. I know it's signed, I know they got it in there, but I'm leery about that. So I maintain the motion that I put on the table.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I just make one comment, Mary Ann made a statement that I think that we need to make sure that we understand that, you know, if these individuals, some of these individuals, you're saying one person potentially loses meals at home and there is no one there to prepare those meals, there's no one there to help that individual, and the county's going to get it on the flip side if we take that individual and have to take them into our care and put them into a rest home. That $10,000 that you're going to spend will turn into tens upon tens upon tens of thousands of dollars. I would like to go with the amendment that Vice Chairman brought up, but I understand in what Commissioner Liner says with these contracts, you can't make a contract for the whole year. They've got to have a guarantee that they're going to have the funding for the whole year to be able to enter in these contracts. And so I don't see, personally, I don't see how we could do that. But I would have to support the amendment.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, if I can ask the questions, and I'm not suggesting that Commissioner Liner is misleading us, I'm just wondering, is there any way that a contract can be extended under current terms for a couple of months or does it indeed have to be?
We can work within that timeframe. We would have to have something in place July 1st, obviously, but we can make changes to the contracts.
And so, second, I guess, second of all, Commissioner Jones, I appreciate the fact that we don't want to leave anybody in the lurch, but is there such a need in our community? I just arbitrarily picked the number of 75 people when I used the example earlier and suggesting that if this cut were to go into effect, that what we'd have to do then is we'd say to that 75th person, sorry, but you can't receive service, or we wouldn't have money available for that 75th person. Are there in fact 80 people that have got need?
Actually, sir, yes, we do have an inquiry list for our in-home services.
Right, so my point is that while it's unfortunate that we would have to perhaps, you know, subtract one person from the list, us thinking that we're failing to meet the need of that one person is really a false promise. We're failing to meet the need of a lot of people. And this is just the budget reality in which we live in. Now, obviously, if we should decide that meeting the needs of 100 percent of the people that are, that fall into that category is something that's a priority for us, well, then we need to pay the piper. But I don't think that we should necessarily say, okay, well, we can't do something today because of this one incremental adjustment that's going to have to be made when we know that in fact that's not really true.
Well, I would, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I would just stay, not rebut you, but Commissioner Liner brought this to our attention two years ago.
He has, and he's been dedicated to this issue.
Of continuation, every time we have, we go through our budget, he's brought it to our attention, the cuts that they are receiving in this agency. And he has stated, and I will, this should be on the record, I think it is, that, you know, we were going to have to probably at some point step up. Now, what we're saying here is we're potentially, we're loaning them $10,257. We're hoping that we're going to come out whole on it. We may not come out whole. We may not come out whole, but I don't think, we're definitely not going to take a loss of $2,000, $10,257 at the end of the cycle, I do not believe. Anyway, not trying to rebut.
No, and I think that's a fair statement.
Any other discussion? Okay. Could you read the motion to us again so we understand what we're voting for?
As I understand, how's that?
That sounds good to me.
The motion that I understand is that you want to approve the 10% match as requested, amended such that you would also provide them, was it $10,257 in anticipation of federal funding to come through with their budget? And whatever they receive, you receive, you would get repayment for that minus the 10%.
Plus appointing a committee.
Plus appointing a committee.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we vote on the amendment first. We need to vote on the amendment first. And then the results of that, you would then vote on whatever resulting motion they get.
So we need a motion?
That's the matter.
Mr. Chairman.
We already have a motion.
You have the motion and the amended motion according to your survey.
All right, so let's vote on the amended motion. All those, may I have a second on that?
Yes, Mr. Kay, you may just say.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays?
No.
Ayes, have it.
Mr. Chairman, that was the vote on the amendment. Now you need to vote on the motion as amended.
We have a motion to vote on the amendment.
No, we have a motion.
Motion.
On the main motion.
On the main motion. Second on that? We have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? The ayes have it. Going to number four now. And Convention Center Tourism Development Authority contract, check by.
Good morning, Commissioners, hope you're doing well this morning. On April 23rd, in our work session during our regularly scheduled Commissioner meeting, there was some discussion about the contract, specifically the management contract between Craven County and the Craven County Tourism Development Authority. This item was asked to be placed back on this agenda by the Commissioners for action or further discussion. So it's before you today. And attachment number four in your agenda package is the current contract, which was adopted on May 15, 2017. And it is a three-year term for that. So I'm here for questions or comments, anything you may need for that.
Okay. Do we have any questions by any of the Commissioners?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I'll just have a comment. I mean, obviously, we signed the contract, we have to abide by it, but I think that this board should consider at least setting up another subcommittee to study whether the county needs to be involved with the TDA and consider, consider split, doesn't mean you're going to do it, but at least consider whether that TDA board should function separate from the Convention Center and see which way may be best for the county moving forward. Not suggesting that you should or shouldn't, but I think it's something that needs to be talked about in depth. What I'm reading, this contract is valid for three years. Is that correct, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. It's a term of three years beginning in May of 2017.
Mr. Chairman, I also think that we should have set up some other, some kind of committee that we can talk some more about this before we actually make our decision.
Commissioner Sampson, any other?
I mean, I think, Mr. Chairman, I think the county does a pretty good job of running the Convention Center. And there's going to be a lot of wants and needs as the building continues to age. Fortunately, the debt is coming off, I think, next year. Is that right, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
And so, but with that said, there's, you know, the building is getting to be 20 years plus aged now. There are still some structural issues that are going to take some money and time and effort to correct. And just a lot of the infrastructure of the building itself probably needs to be looked at and improved as time goes by. I know that we had a rough architectural study done of perhaps increasing the space along the back, along the riverfront some, so there's a lot of needs and all. And I'm just not sure if someone managing that needs to be trying to manage bringing tourism to the entire county, which is kind of what we do now along with input from the Tourism and Development Authority. Maybe, or it may not be, but I think we need to put a lot of time and thought into that over the next two years. We've got plenty of time to decide.
Mr. Chairman, also, I'd just like to say that I found out in my lifetime, people working together can do great things. But people working divided, especially the city kind, I would try everything, anything possible to work together with the cities and the counties that we can get things done rather than working against one another. That's a hard, hard job to be able to finish.
Commissioner Sampson, I don't think we're talking about any divide of anybody. I think that we would be working together, whether we're working with a separate tourism development outside the county or we're working with it. Basically, the Convention Center is going to be there, it's going to be used by the Tourism Development Authority. What we're doing here, in my opinion, is giving them their own destiny as far as who they want to hire and how they want to progress as far as pushing the county ahead. And we would certainly be a team involved in that matter.
Mr. Chairman, I wasn't speaking on those terms you're talking about. I was speaking on a term that we would try to work it out before we make our decision. I know I would like to try to work it out.
Mr. Chairman, okay. We are still going to be members of the TDA Authority. That's by statute, that we'll be members. But I think Commissioner Tyson hit it on the head here. This may be the right time because they have different avenues that they're looking to approach. We have different avenues that we have to take care of as far as that facility. That facility is going to be down for some time for repairs, upgrades. I'm not saying we're different, but we, there's agendas that they're looking for, agendas that we have to get taken care of that's going to affect them as well. I see this as an opportunity that we allow them to chart their own destiny. The statute states that they can hire anyone to run the TDA. They just chose over the years to do it with the county. It may not be the best fit at this time due to everything that's going on as which directions we want to go into. We have our own directions that we have to take care of and we have to move forward on. So I would, I would support giving him guidance because he needs to take care of people as well to look at this.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask, you know, Commissioner Tyson brought it up about the contract that we have. And so I would refer to the county attorney, you know. What can we do as a board of Commissioners?
Well, as we discussed previously, it is a three-year contract. We're about one year into that contract. However, if the two parties want to get together and amend or terminate the, you know, sever the contract, that's always a possibility. So that would be something that the board could explore if it felt like it was time to go, quote, "separate ways." And then there are other provisions in the contract, which I provided to you all before, which I would not be as comfortable sharing in open session, that are also possibilities for, in regards to the termination of the contract.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, again, whatever actions we take today, that's still 120 days we have to deal with to work things out one way or the other. They accept, not accept, or we come together on how we're going to do this. This is not a vote today that is terminated today. It's just 120 days if we so to elect to give the guidance to move forward.
Mr. Chairman, I guess I kind of view that a little bit differently. If we vote to terminate the contract, we vote to terminate the contract. And it's just that it does not take effect until 120 days. But that effectively gives parties four months of time in order to set up how that stated transition will occur at that 120th day. But I think if you were to make a determination today that you're going to terminate the contract, you're terminating the contract.
I don't believe this board has the authority to terminate a contract without non-performance.
Again, you know, if the parties mutually agree, that's one thing. If the county unilaterally wants to terminate the contract without, let's just say, the consent of the TDA, then you would have to do so under a breach of the contract by the TDA. And that's the circumstance that you're required to give them 120-day notice. But the county does not have the unilateral authority just to terminate it for any reason at all.
Moreover, there is a cure provision in the contract itself that would seem to be the first step that you'd take. Although, is that one-sided in that cure provision where it's just the TDA? Makes the announcement that the county is not fulfilling the obligations under the contract?
Well, the cure provision is actually written only in the context that the county is to follow. Under the, the county would be the party in breach, so to speak. So that would be an issue with the TDA. We'd have to say, "County, you're not performing, you have 30 days."
And thus far, they've not done that.
Not to my knowledge, no, sir.
Mr. Chairman. I think that we're probably divided as a board today in direction of that. I think we all have concerns with the current situation, and I'll leave it at that. Maybe it would be in the best interest, and this is just my recommendation, if we would to request a meeting with TDA and let them be aware that at our next meeting, that, you know, we will make a decision one way or the other of whether to proceed or not to proceed and address our concerns to them. And if it can be worked out, worked out. And if it can't, then at our next meeting, we vote and proceed forward whichever way the board wants to go.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Again, I think we don't have the authority to go whichever way we want to go according to the contract. But regardless, I just want to point one thing out. The Craven County Tourism Development Authority was actually established in 1983. So they functioned 17 years before that Convention Center opened, you know, in and of their self without the county's. I don't know to what extent the county was involved, if any, at that time. It's something we need to explore. I think we all kind of agree that we need to probably sit down with the TDA and just see where they feel like they need to go, where we need to go. Certainly, they could function of their own, I believe, with the money that they would be receiving as per the agreement. So just a lot of, we need to sit down and talk with them.
Okay, I think before we sit down and talk with them, we've got to sit down and talk with ourselves as to what we are going to do if we want to go in that direction. That would be the first step. So I would go along with appointing a, actually, a committee. And that committee come back and give a report, and then the board make a decision.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. We've been briefed by the attorney in closed session a number of times this issue brought up on personnel issues that we were pretty much in agreement with which way we were going to go. Now, there's been separate meetings of some on this board who've heard both sides and know what's going on. So we've had meetings with ones and twos and maybe threes with that. If we're going to do this all over again, then it needs to be an open meeting with all seven of us hearing the same thing because this does not help the staff decide what they're going to do with personnel on the personnel matter that we need to take care of. It's putting him in a bind on how we're going to work and go. We've gone from one side of the pendulum, swung all the way back to the other side of the pendulum on how we started this and working. We've had meetings to death with both organizations. So.
Mr. Liner. On Tuesday of this last week, the Chairman and I were able to sit down with two representatives of the TDA and I believe had a very candid conversation where the idea of, I mean, the simple fact is, is that if we were to make a break, now would be the appropriate time to do it because we have gaps in our employment structure. A number of folks have left the employee of the Convention Center. And if there were ever a time to make a separation, now would be a very good time for that, for us to consider that, given the fact that we do not have obligations of employees at this point. Now, does that mean that we're not fulfilling the terms of the agreement? I believe the county manager is working diligently to make certain that we are continuing to do so. But I'm very mindful of the fact that Commissioner Tyson raises obviously very valid points here and that the terms of the agreement suggest that unless there's been a breach, we can't terminate this agreement. And the TDA has simply not triggered anything under the cure provisions, which would indicate that there has been a breach. So we don't really even have any standing, it appears, to terminate the agreement, even if we wanted to do so.
Is that what you said?
Not exactly.
Well, here's what I'm reading. Here's what I'm reading. It says termination. The contract may be terminated by parties upon 120 days written notice of the other party of the intent, of the intention to terminate for non-performance of the terms and conditions specified herein in our action. Okay, I don't know that we have, we may, but I don't know of any specific non-performance that we could hold the TDA responsible for today.
There might, there might not be, that's something I can share in open session.
Right. But we also, we do know that they have not come to us. There's a proceeding paragraph that talks about cure provisions where they basically have got the ability to come to us and say, what, excuse me, cure provision, "In the event the county should fail to continuously fulfill any or all of the obligations or requirements herein, and in the event the county should fail to cure such default or begin the process of curing such default and continuously prosecute such cure in the event that such default could not be cured by a reasonably diligent person working with knowledge of the default within 30 days, and after the county has been notified of such default, this agreement shall terminate automatically and be of no further force and effect." But we've not been notified of that provision either. So it seems to me as though that the option that maybe has been articulated by Commissioner Tyson is the only pathway that we've got at this point if we want to do something.
I go back again to how are we going to handle? How are we going to have, how are we going to direct staff to hire a director who has to continue to provide the services for the TDA in these reports knowing the flux that we're in? Because either we have a director or we violate this contract because we don't... Because either we have a director, or we violate this contract because we don't have a director who's providing the services or the reports to the TDA that 5510 states that we're to do, and, and, and the rest of them. All, almost all of five, a lot of five, I haven't read all of them, but a lot of five. The duties.
I think you're talking about the balance of work.
Yes.
That the county's responsible for.
Yes.
To the TDA.
Right.
How do you do that while still not completely staffed? Is that where you're going to?
That's what I'm getting at.
Got it.
Significant for you.
Yes.
How are you going to get somebody to come in here with the flux that we're in, and which way we're going to go?
Right, exactly. We're crossing, I mean, my comfort level with discussing personnel is probably at that point, but you're, you're spot on.
Yeah, you shouldn't discuss here.
We can't discuss that at this, this point, and...
That, Mr. Chairman, that's our predicament. There is more to this story than what we're being able to say here. But we can't discuss the rest of this story in open session.
Not in an open session, right.
And, you know, people that sit in the audience look at us and say, "Well, why in the world are you even discussing this? You know, if you can't get out of contract, well, there's more to the story." But I can't tell you legally what there's more to the story about, you know? And that's the predicament that we're in as a board, that we've got to deal with, and there's no question, we've got to deal with the other side of this, one way or the other. That's why I think, I, you know, I agree, we've talked to ourselves to death, some of you have, I've not been in those discussions, but I think there's got to be a, a meeting between both boards to sit down, and, and we've got to be firm in setting some, some rules and desires that we have as elected leaders, and then they have also the right to come back to us. But there's some things that we, as a board of commissioners, we're here to represent over 100,000 people in this county. They've entrusted in us, and there's some things we've got to draw a line, line in the sand and say, you know, "We're not going to take so much crap." And I'll leave it at that, you know? And we, we've got to take a stand and do that.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. County Manager.
Sure.
Would it be possible, maybe this isn't the right meeting to do it, but to recess and, I know the chairman of the TDA, I believe, is here, and maybe find out when they could have a meeting, and I think Commissioner Leiner is right.
She's not here.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. But it, the, to have a full meeting, their full board, our full board, full board, together, and at that meeting, would it be possible, if that meeting occurred, to, to go into a closed session during that?
No.
Because you, well, I mean, depends on the subject. I mean, if you're going to go in there and talk about personnel, no, because that's your personnel, not theirs.
Okay.
If you go in there to talk about the contract, I don't, other than terms of a breach, I don't, I do not believe you can.
Could this board go into closed session without them, while at the same meeting, we just go into another room? Would we have the authority to?
Sully, for the purpose of personnel or attorney-client privilege that may arise from that meeting, but not generally known as...
At this time, they do not have legal representation, the last time I checked. So you gotta, it's kind of working without a net with them, and that's been a concern of mine with the TDAs, they don't have legal representation. And they may have changed, I mean, the last few months, that may have changed, but last time I checked, they did not.
Can we go into closed session by ourselves to discuss this matter?
Again, only as it touches on the personnel aspect or issues under attorney-client privilege, such as grounds for default termination.
That's what I was getting at. I think that everybody should understand what the personnel matter is as a board.
Are you prepared to do that?
I can, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we go into closed session right now to discuss the personnel matter, given if you want to call out the...
Do we want to do it one hour or wait until we're done? Do we want to do it right now or wait until we're done with the rest of the agenda?
Yeah, why don't we do it after we go through the rest of the agenda? Have a closed session.
Okay.
Okay? So the motion is to have a closed session at the end of the agenda, and go into a closed session at that time.
It would be for under personnel and attorney-client privilege.
Personnel. Do I have a, a mo, a second?
We had one on us.
You're already a minute ready.
Yeah, but can we do that now? The motion and the, and the second?
I'd wait till then we need to make the motion.
Yeah, I'll draw my motion.
All right.
I'll throw a second.
Thank you.
Let's go on to appointments. Appointments will be effective immediately unless otherwise specified. Pending appointments, Adult Care Home Advisory Committee. And we have one person there, Susan Layton, for reappointment, and I will reappoint Susan Layton. Do you have, uh, we have a couple others on there too, right?
Uh, you have Craven County Clean Sweet.
We've got Craven County Clean Sweet. And we have Fred Pittinger.
Michael Duffy.
And Michael Duffy. Do I have an appointment for that? I'll appoint both of them. Next is upcoming appointments, Craven County Tourism Authority, Nursing Home Advisory Committee, Juvenile Crime Prevention Committee, Fire Tax Commissioners, Craven County Recreation Advisory Council. Those are all coming up. Mr. Chair, can I reappoint, what, a Fire Tax Commissioner, Sandra Hamilton? I think that's coming up, will be next, next meeting, okay. County Attorney's Report.
Ambulance, don't pick, you're in, sorry. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Just one matter this morning. If you'll recall, back in 2013, the county discovered that for purposes of filing for Medicaid reimbursements on behalf of the rescue squads in the county, it was deemed that to make that happen, the county itself needed to own an ambulance. At that time, Carolina East donated an ambulance to the county, and then the county leases it back to the hospital for its initial intended purpose. The lease for the ambulance is a yearly lease, and it's coming up for renewal again in this June. Before you is the proposed lease, it's basically the exact same as it's been every year. The only difference is now that we have some history and realize, you know, that it, that it seems to be working, the request is for this to be a two-year lease instead of one-year lease.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
I'll move, second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those not in favor, nay. The ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Presentation of proposed budget, Jack White.
I know you guys have all been on the edge of the chair. Yes. I'm going to make you wait another second, because I have to take a minute of privilege from the county manager's report. Introduce our new water superintendent, Al Gerard. Al, if you'll stand up and try not to block the camera. There you go. Al has been with us, Al, which you've been here about three weeks.
Yes.
He was previously the water superintendent of Pamlico County, so we're really pleased to have him, he's doing a great job so far. So, Al, welcome aboard.
I had a chance to meet you guys on a, appreciate the privilege.
If you need anything, water, Al's your guy, so. All right. As we're wrapping up handing you guys out your budgets, it's that time of year, and I'm really pleased, again, to be here with you and being able to read the budget message to you. I'm just going to do that first, and then I'll, I'll certainly take any comments or questions. But just so the public's aware, immediately following this meeting, we'll be having a ribbon cutting over the animal shelter, and then we'll come back for our first budget work session around noon today.
Close session.
Closed session, right. But once the closed session's finished, we'll go to animal shelter and then come back and do that. So with that said, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board of Commissioners, it is again my privilege to present you with the recommended fiscal year 2019 budget for Craven County. The proposed budget is balanced and has been prepared in accordance with the North Carolina Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act. As proposed, I believe this budget incorporates the priorities and policy direction of the board, while continuing to provide the highest quality of services to citizens of Craven County in the most fiscally responsible manner. The recommended general fund budget for fiscal year 2019 totals $104,420,79. Without any fund balance appropriated, it recommends the ad valorem tax rate remain the same as the current year at 53.94 cents per hundred dollars of valuation. While there is no fund balance appropriated in the recommended budget, local governments are strongly encouraged to maintain adequate fund balances in order to ensure against unanticipated events that could adversely affect the county's financial position and further jeopardize the continuation of county services. As such, Craven County continues to budget and operate in a fiscally responsible manner, providing a fund balance sufficient enough to accomplish this while remaining in line with those of our peers statewide. Craven County's available fund balance was 27.26% of expenditures at June 30, 2017, which is our audit time, while other counties with over 100,000 in population had fund balances averaging 26.75%, and then all 100 counties grouped together averaged 28.24%. As we approach upon a new fiscal year here in Craven County, the county, county's financial position continues to improve. Craven County has experienced positive growth this year, including both commercial and residential development within our urbanized area, along with continued increases in sales tax revenue. Sales tax collections through April are currently trending 6.7% higher than the same time last year, providing an optimistic outlook heading into the next fiscal year. Better-than-projected revenues received from other sources, including the Medicaid sales tax or harmless distribution, and increased investment earnings have also contributed to the county's enhanced revenue position. Total revenues in the budget are down 1.3 million for the first 10 months compared to the same time period last year. Although revenues are down, this is actually a positive direction, as the state this fiscal year began taking over processing of direct benefit payments made to those receiving public assistance. These programs are administered through our county social service department and include the Medicaid Transportation Program, the Determination of Benefit Eligibility, excuse me, the Medicaid Transportation and the Childcare Subsidy Program. Like other public assistance programs such as Medicaid, the determination of the benefit eligibility remained with Craven County DSS, leaving the administrative burden, leaving the administrative burden locally. The benefit payments will now be paid directly from the state to the recipient instead of passing through counties in North Carolina. Both programs combined total approximately $4.7 million. That will no longer pass through the county, significantly reducing our actual revenues and expenditures, both in the year and in the recommended budget. Expenditures and transfers out for the first 10 months of the year are higher than last year by 1.7 million. The majority of this increase is due to a timing change in, in the debt service payment schedule for school debt refinancing for fiscal year 2013. The refinancing resulted in an earlier principal payment of approximately 1.5 million made in December this fiscal year versus occurring in May last fiscal year. Other contributing factors included budgeted increase in the areas of health and public safety going into the current fiscal year. The county ended fiscal 2017 in a strong financial position, adding approximately $2.8 million to the county's fund balance. Higher-than-expected revenues, along with the county's conservative approach to spending, provided the ability to transfer 1.1 million into the capital reserve fund this, that fiscal year. Although we were able to make a transfer in, approximately 1.6 million was used toward budgeted capital items and projects, reducing the capital reserve fund balance by approximately 470,000 at June 30, 2017. Funding the capital reserve continues to serve as an important part of the county's financial position and provides for future needs while preventing tax increases and borrowing costs to fund large capital items. There are a number of factors that have significant impact on the proposed budget. The current assessed value for fiscal 2019 is estimated to be approximately $9.42 billion, a 1.67 increase over the estimate of 9.265 billion used for fiscal 2018 budget. The county has experienced modest growth in the tax base over the past year, as the fiscal 19 estimate projects an increase of approximately 103 million in estimated value over that actual period for fiscal 2017. Total revenues and expenditures each amount to $104,420,79 in the recommended budget for fiscal 19. This represents a decrease of 4.8 million or 4.4% compared to the current budget through the end of April. As noted previously, much of this decrease is attributed to the state now paying public assistance benefits directly to providers of Medicaid transportation and childcare. Property tax revenues are estimated to increase by 1.8% over the 2018 budget, along with, with sales tax revenues, which are projected to increase by 4.34% over the amount budgeted for 2018. The amount budgeted for sales tax next year reflects a 4% increase over the last 12 months of actual receipts. Consumer confidence remains strong locally, and with the recent addition of new retail opportunities, this trend is expected to continue. Transfers to the general fund from the capital reserve fund are down approximately 666,000 from the current budget. Capital outlay and major repair projects were closely examined, and only as a result of the capital reserve fund, most were able to be funded. Overall, capital outlay costs are down approximately 1.2 million compared to the current budget. Of the total capital expenditures of 2 million, 1.1 million is funded with transfers from the capital reserve. The majority of capital expenditures funded in this budget include the maintenance and replacement of vital infrastructure in the areas of technology and facility improvements. In addition to the capital items funded in this budget, the largest single project in the upcoming fiscal year is the relocation of the Hickman Hill Convenience Site. This project was delayed when environmental concerns forced the North Carolina Department of Transportation to put the Highway 70 have-a-lot bypass project on hold. Now that those concerns have been addressed, the bypass project is now back on schedule or likely begin in the upcoming fiscal year. The relocation of the Hickman Hill Convenience Site is budgeted for, in the capital improvement plan, and will be funded entirely from the capital reserves. The master facilities plan study is currently underway and is expected to be completed early next calendar year. This will be the first facility needs assessment the county has done. The goal of this study is to identify and address the space and facility needs of the county as we head into the future. Several improvements to our recreational assets have also been planned for in the recommended budget at Creekside, the inclusion of four new sand volleyball courts, in addition to widening the entrance up front. It is also recommended that security enhancements be included for a new camera system at West Craven Park. The proposed budget includes one recommended fee change for natural gas permits. This fee is currently $70 and includes the initial hookup and one or many appliance additions. The proposed fee change keeps the base permit fee at $70, however adds an additional $12 for each appliance or fixture installed. This additional per-appliance fee will allow the county to recoup additional costs, often associated with inspections, that sometimes require multiple trips and increased time. As a result of these changes that occurred this year surrounding how direct benefit payments are processed by the state, social service revenues are down approximately $4.3 million, while service, social service expenditures are also down $4.4 million overall from the current budget. Expenditures in animal control are up 200,000 from the current year due to increases in operating personnel and capital as needed for the expanded shelter project, which we will cut a ribbon on later today. Additional personnel were created in the current budget not only to enforce the newly revised animal control ordinance, but also to improve the overall customer experience inside the department. In the area of mental health, the proposed budget addresses the current opioid epidemic by partnering with neighboring jurisdictions and hospitals to establish the Dicks Crisis Intervention Center in Onslow County. Primary goal of this 16-bed inpatient facility is provide an alternative place besides the emergency room for crisis prevention, crisis response, and stabilization services related to addiction and/or mental health concerns. Craven County's participation in the consortium is budgeted at 300,000 for fiscal 2019 and assures our residents and citizens access this very important resource. The current, the budget continues to invest in the county's greatest asset by recommending a 2% cost of living increase for employees. This accounts for both increases due to inflation, while also maintaining the competitiveness of Craven County in the current labor market. Total county salaries in the recommended budget are 1,159,000 higher than the original budget of 2018. Approximately 221,000 of this increase was for positions added during the current year, the year that we're in now. Those positions include the Animal Services Director, Animal Control Lead Officer, Deputy Sheriff Investigator Narcotics and a Water Field Tech One. Five new full-time positions are recommended in the fiscal 2019 budget, and they are listed as follows: one Deputy Sheriff Investigator Narcotics, one Fire Inspector One, one Public Health Nurse Three for hospice, one Income Maintenance Caseworker Two, and one Income Maintenance Caseworker Three. Total benefit costs are budgeted to be $502,000 higher than the current budget due to a recommended 10% increase in health and dental premiums. The increase is needed to fund the county's self-insured plan, as claims this year have been running significantly higher than last year. The increase in premiums accounts for 348,000 of the total increase in benefit cost, providing additional stability in the self-insurance fund, with the goal of reducing the need for higher increases to the premium in future budgets. The increase will apply to both the county and employee premiums. The retirement system employer contribution rates were increased in next year's budget and account for $96,000 of the increase in benefits cost. The salary study funded in the current year's budget analyzing the county's pay scale and its market competitiveness is currently being finalized and expected to be completed before the end of June. Overall funding for Craven County schools is proposed to increase by $300,000. Overall funding for Craven County schools is proposed to increase by $300,000, continuing the county's investment support for our local school system. As the school system has experienced teacher turnover rates higher than average across the state in the southeast, additional funding is requested to address the change by increasing the local teacher supplements by 1.5 percent to 8.5 percent at an additional cost of $900,000. 600,000 of the increase in supplement as proposed will be partially funded from the school's fund balance and will become a reoccurring cost to the county in future budgets. Capital outlay requested is 1,994,967, the same as the current year's budget, and includes one Category One project over $100,000. Included in the capital amount requested are the transfers made in the current fiscal year from the local current expense fund to the capital fund for the Apple iPad leases that have been distributed this school year to the students. The proposed budget funds Craven Community Colleges requested, current expense at 3,548,198, which represents net increase of $5,750 over the current year. The net increase includes 53,250 towards additional personnel, cost offset by the current year's appropriation of 47,500 for the Volt Workforce Development Center. Due to the Volt Workforce Development Center not expecting to be open until next fiscal year, funding appropriated to college in the current budget is still available and will be carried forward into fiscal 2019. Capital outlay for the college continues to be retained at 500,000 as agreed previously, with half of that funding come from the county's reserve fund, Capital Reserve Fund. The proposed fiscal 2019 budget provides balance of fiscal responsibility addressing the many needs across the county while continuing to maintain the lowest tax rate possible for the citizens of Craven County. Craven County values the competitive edge maintaining a low tax rate offers in areas such as economic development and retirement relocations. As always, there is still the possibility the General Assembly may take actions that could affect the county budget. We will continue to monitor for those potential impacts. However, I believe Craven County continues to be positioned well fiscally to address any challenges that may come forward. Finally, I wish to commend the department head, staff, and agencies for their cooperation and valuable assistance in this very difficult budget process. I would like to say a special thank you to our Finance Director Craig Warren. Thank you, Craig. Amber Parker, our Human Resource Director, thank you, Amber, and Assistant County Manager Gene Hodges, thank you, Gene, for their essential contributions to this budget process. I look forward to working with the Board of Commissioners and finalizing the fiscal 2019 budget. The recommended budget shall immediately be available for the public inspection in both my office and on the county's website. I would recommend at this time, however, that the Board schedule a public hearing for 7:00 PM on June 4, 2018, and conduct budget study sessions as necessary. Thank you.
Do you have a motion?
Make a motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes, I just have a few things here. George and I had a chance to attend the 2018 Annual Salute to Our Veterans at the Tour Center in Havelock. It was a great turnout. We had the master ceremony with General Tom Bryden, and also the guest speaker was Havelock Chief, Police Department Police Marvin Williams. This went very well, and it was a good turnout, and a lot of people came to their support. Also had a chance to attend the early college at the Havelock Tour Center on May 11, at 6:30. Those high school kids that go to two-year college and get to move on to the two-year college, the choice they wanted to go to. And they had applied for science and technology, high schools, and they had a lot of people there. I think George, were you there? You didn't attend. Okay. Well, it was a good program. It's good that kids can go to high school and be able to attend college and come out and get a 40 degree and want to go to other schools of that choice. I do have something else, Mr. Chair, but I think I'm going to wait for this one for the June 4 meeting. That's all I have for now.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes, I'm very concerned about how the gas prices continue to jump. I know when you, I used to go to gas stations, and I know other people feeling their effect, and I could put $20 off in there, and that's about fill it up. But now I go way past $20, and now when I go to fill it up. So we need to be aware that peoples are suffering, because a lot of people don't have this in their budget. A lot of people don't have budget, because they don't know how to set up one, because they don't have any money to set them up. And I know we tried to do our best up here to try to help those that really need help, but a lot of people still fall by the wayside. We have a lot of people that are still hungry, some of them in our neighborhood, still have people walking the street, still have people with mental health issues still in our community and going to our hospital and costing the taxpayer a lot of money. But we have a problem, but I can say we are doing fine as a county, and we just need to continue to try to do our best to help those that really need help. A lot of our senior citizens are still not being well taken care of. I still go to the rest homes and looking on the people at the rest home. Some of them is still not getting the attention that they deserve, and we know that we can't correct all faults, but we can do the best we can and do what we can. And each citizen have a responsibility for helping the fellow man, fellow woman, and I can all, I see we have a lot of balance going on in our community. A lot of school shootings continue to go on, and it's kind of boggining to see how angry some of our young people and senior citizens are in trying not to abide by the laws of the land. And we just need to continue on working harder to do things that are going to try to eliminate some of the things that's happening. I feel like we have one of the best communities anywhere. Anywhere you go, I think Craven County will be in the, be number one or even in the top 10. But we don't want to fall below that. We want to continue to do our best and working together. I realize that we can do our best in working together, one with another. Also, I was at the History Center the other night, and they had the young people there that was some of the first ones to integrate our high schools, and it's, I think it's been about 50 years since we, as a county, had had our school integration come forth. We know we had some problems, but we was able to work the problems out, and we was able to come out of it pretty well. I think it was five, five students, I believe, that some of them, I think with three in high school and two in elementary school. And the way they was talking about what happened to them when they was in the high school for immigration, it has passed and gone, I hope, the way some of them say they was treated in the school system. And I'm just hoping that we continue to make this county the best county in all the 100 counties in North Carolina. We even, our, Jerry Morgan was one of the students in the lower grade when the integration began, and we came a long ways, but I can say without a doubt, we still have a long ways to go. I believe we are here to the other counties, but we don't need to slow down. We need to continue on working together, doing the best that we can to help one another. And we had, I tell you, there were more people out there than I thought it would be. The parking lot was full, and you're running over. They were all outside to gait so many people. Then it rained also, so seemed like people still interested in making this, continuing to making this the best county it is for people to look at the map and see that they want to make their home in any county that they can come to Craven County. That's all I have.
Mr. Chair, I've got one thing. I'd like to recognize our City Commissioner out here in the audience. Stand up and say your name, so everybody know.
Jim Corr, City Commissioner of Havelock.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just want to remind everybody, June 23, the great Trent River Rap Race is making its comeback and be the first time in 20 or so years that they've had it. It's going to be a big, big event, and I look forward to it. There's going to be a lot of music down at Union Point Park, and this year they'll have paddleboards, which didn't exist to my knowledge in the 80s when they did the original, but if you like to paddleboard, kayak, canoe, or want to build a raft, certainly you need to get on board, because the thing is filling up pretty quick.
June 23?
June 23. A lot of activity downtown at Union Point Park. I'd also like to point out that the state of North Carolina is projecting a $550 million budget surplus this year, and I'd like to commend the General Assembly on taking some action that allowed for that, some of it which was increasing taxes on working-class people, but by the new, the new tax that they put on for labor. But nonetheless, they've done a good job with the budget all in all. However, something that did concern me, I saw there's a bill that they're going to be voting on in the short session, which started, I think, last week, on school safety, and there, and this bill would, would give an extra $1.5 million towards school safety for the whole county, I mean for the whole state, I believe, which is, what is that, 15,000 a county or something like that. We really need to start taking this issue more seriously, and unfortunately, we live in a time where there's seems to be more mental illness in our society, and we could debate why that's the case, but I believe that the state of North Carolina is going to have to be more serious when it comes to investing in mental health and school safety. $1.5 million just isn't going to get it, I can tell you that, and we already saw in the county manager's proposed budget that Craven County has appropriated up to $300,000 to help, at least with some stock gap measured, when folks are taken to the emergency room of the opiate overdose, at least they have, hopefully will have somewhere to take in the county, invest in our own resources, because we didn't feel like the state of North Carolina has been investing in this epidemic as much as they should be. So I hope our legislators will relook at this, I think it's HB Bill 941, I think it is, if you can read it yourself, and I suggest everybody contact their state legislatures and ask that they take this a little bit more serious and invest more funding into that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Two items, just to share with the Board. Again, I've been announcing it, but Partners in Education will have their annual luncheon June 12 at noon at the Newman Riverfront Convention Center. The guest speaker will be Dr. Staten, Staten, who's the chancellor at East Carolina University, and so hadn't got your tickets for that, please do so.
What was the date on that?
June 12, June 12. And I do have a few tickets left, Mr. Chairman. The last thing I would say, I shared it with Commissioner Tyson here. Let me see just a second there. Go and continue to go through some of my grandfather's stuff from his many years of service throughout the county, and I found this program. It was from May 21, 1978, at 2:30 in the afternoon, the dedication of West Craven Junior High School, it's 40 years today, and the guest speaker for this dedication service was the Honorable Robert Morgan, who was United States Senator from here in North Carolina. And I put it on our Facebook page last night for County Commission and showed it and shared it with a lot of folks. A lot of great people that are in here who served us in our school system and have gone on to be with the Lord, many of them now, others are still living, but a lot of history we have in Craven County. I visited West Craven Middle School the other day, and even though, you know, it's 40 years old, it's still, they've done a good job in keeping that facility up, and I commend them, so that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Liner?
Sure, I have a few things. First of all, I'll thank Commissioner McCabe for the salute events that was held at Havelock. Great event, as always. Another event coming up for everybody, invite to come down to on the 14th of June at 11:30 at the Convention Center in Havelock is the Salute to Women in the Military, and that's been a good event the past couple of years. Next thing I would ask this Board if they would have any issues or problems, I would like to apply to the NACO Presidential Appointment to the Military Affairs Committee, if there was no objections from this Board, because that's one of the questions I have in Board approval on that, if that's all right with the Board.
Does everybody approve that? I think you've got consensus.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, tomorrow, the Central Advisory Committee for Trillium will be meeting in the afternoon, and I will be going to that meeting, and I just wanted Commissioners to be aware that if there are any concerns specifically that you're hearing in your, in your districts, let me know. If there's anything that you need me to bring to the attention of the folks at Trillium, I'm happy to try to do so, otherwise, thank you.
I would like to name that committee to be on for the, let me see what that was here. Okay. On the Aging and Planning Board, Commissioner Liner, Vice Chairman Dacey, and Commissioner Sampson. Those three on that, everybody except.
What board was that?
The Aging Board.
Aging and Planning Board.
You and your tourist line up.
Okay, so those three people.
I had to open my mouth, I did.
Yes, you did. I have nothing to report. Let's go into closed session.
Make a motion.
Motion to go into closed session.
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, the ayes have it.